Can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
Sorry, a little technical difficulty right here, sorry. The proposed FY twenty five budget for the police department totals two hundred ninety-two point four million, an increase of four hundred thirty-six thousand or zero point one percent over the FY twenty-four budget. On page two of the analysis, the largest portion of the department's budget, which is the general fund budget, totals two hundred and sixty-seven million and increases by six point eight million or two point six percent, primarily due to an increase in personnel expenses such as salary enhancements, forty-seven new net new positions, including thirty-eight new positions to expand the school crossing guard program, offset by decreased bonus wage expenses and additional turnover savings. The special fund portion of the budget totals twenty-five point three million and decreases by six point four million or twenty point one percent, primarily for decreased funding for the school bus camera program, which has not been implemented, offset by increased funding for the speed camera program due to the implementation of six additional cameras in FY twenty twenty-four and an anticipated fourteen additional school zone speed cameras in FY twenty twenty-five. Included in the department's special fund budget are five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in county local share funds, which are originally appropriated in the general fund. Exhibit one displays the department's budget history as well as the general fund reversion each year, including a two million dollar estimated reversion for FY twenty-four, of which approximately one million dollars will be presented to the council on June third, twenty twenty-four as a budget appropriation transfer to the Department of Corrections to fund higher than anticipated costs. On page three, the pie charts show how the proposed funding will be allocated. Personal costs represent the largest category of expenditures. Also, starting on page three, the analysis notes the areas within the budget that may reflect department-specific budget flexibility in an effort to provide insight into the operational context for any potential reductions. Operating budget highlights, which begin on page six, include personnel expenses, non-personnel operating expenses, and the special fund. Additional topics for discussion include the department reorganization, school traffic guards, recruitment, assigned vehicle community presence program, speed camera program, school bus camera program, and ARPA funding. Finally, the capital budget highlights begin on page eighteen. So I would like to turn it over for discussion at this time. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bauer Weeks. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Okay, I don't see any. So why don't we go to Chief McCullough? Chief McCullough, thank you again for your service and the service of all of your colleagues. We're glad to have you here.
Thank you, Councilman Marks. I want to first thank, in his absence, Council Chairman Potoka and the members of the council for your continued support of our department. On a personal note, I want to thank you all for the, both the individual and collective support that I've received over the past year from the council, just personally and everything, and the collective great working relationship that we've had. I just want to share my appreciation with you all for that, first of all. With that said, Baltimore County Police Department exists to protect and serve this community, to protect all life and property across Baltimore County. And with that said, I would jump into address crime and crime statistics first. I would like to first talk briefly about homicides over the past year. So there were thirty-two total homicides from May first to two thousand twenty-three to April the thirtieth of two thousand twenty-four. Thirty-three percent of the homicides had some type of domestic or similar relationship distinction, which demonstrates that there's a familiar or romantic relationship connection involved between the parties. Many cases involve suspected elements of narcotic activity, either cast or present involving dealing. It also, there's sixty-eight point eight percent of all cases have been cleared. However, I expect that number to go up as we continue to clear recent and past homicide cases in Baltimore County. As it relates to violent crime, four cases in two thousand twenty-four year to date have been cleared due to investigations showing that gunshots were accidentally or self-inflicted or falsely reported as criminal activity. In two thousand twenty-four year to date, three of twenty-one cases were non-fatal shootings involving victims that were juveniles. Juveniles made up approximately fourteen percent of our victims involving violent crimes. When it comes to auto theft, many of you are very familiar with the auto theft problem that we've had over the past year and a half, almost two years. And when it comes to auto theft, an auto theft trend involving Hyundai and Kia vehicles increased in two thousand twenty-three due to social media videos demonstrating an easy method of stealing certain models that do not have a proximity key or push button. This is a result of a national trend that is impacting all jurisdictions in Maryland. Hyundai and Kia thefts accounted for sixty point five percent of Baltimore County's auto thefts in two thousand twenty-three. During the calendar year of two thousand twenty-three, the average Hyundai and Kia thefts were approximately two hundred and twenty-five per month. However, during the second half of that year, July through November, it was closer to three hundred per month. The department continues to investigate cases, working collaboratively with other law enforcement agencies, distributing crime prevention messages to the community. And also, of course, you've seen that we've held committee events where we've given away different types of bars and updated software to assist people in preventing their vehicles from being stolen. In addition to that, when it comes to carjackings, there were one hundred and twenty-seven total carjackings from May first, two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-four, with a clearance rate of about forty point nine percent. Many, many of these cases have connections to other crimes in the county. Most are completed using a gun or an implied gun. Our regional auto theft task force team continues to work diligently in investigating these crimes and have been our primary tool in apprehending these suspects. In terms of some legislative updates to include the juvenile bill, we were very involved in this past session and working with our Baltimore County delegation and the State Senate and our House delegation in terms of drafting and working on juvenile legislation and trying to make some improvements to address the auto theft problem and this national trend. In terms of vacancies with Baltimore County Police Department, as of May the third, two thousand twenty-four, when it comes to sworn vacancies, we had two hundred and thirty-three vacancies. However, we have ninety-three recruits that are currently in the training academy, and we expect the full recruit class scheduled in July, two thousand twenty-four. We also have scheduled an experienced officer program, which is a viral officer program that's scheduled to start in June of two thousand twenty-four. Currently, twelve officers have returned or are in the process of being rehired after leaving Baltimore County Police Department, and that's just twelve over in about a month's time. So we are seeing a trend where we had officers that were leaving, thinking that there was green and brass at other agencies or at other places, and many of them have found out that this is the best place to work, and many of them are coming back. In terms of our professional staff, we have one hundred and two vacancies in professional staff. That's down from one hundred and sixteen where we were in January. Twenty-nine professional staff are currently in our background process. The largest number of vacancies are in our records section. All positions are actively posted and being interviewed as viable resumes are received. In addition to that, at one time, we had quite a few vacancies in forensics. This had been turned around as a result of action taken by the council itself to assist us in FY two thousand twenty-four to raise compensation. These positions are all reposted, being actively filled, and we're seeing a huge turnaround in our forensic section. When it comes to recruitment, we continue to use methods like social media, Facebook, Instagram, mobile advertisements with MTA, vehicle graphics, sporting events, hiring events, job fairs, college and high school visits, targeting graduating classes. And we even formed a work group to address recruitment retention and mental wellness inside our ages. When it comes to our assigned vehicle community presence program, our take-home car program, currently, we have sixty-seven members that are participating across ten counties. All vehicles were converted from the existing fleet or participants' jobs assignments and conducive to the program in terms of SROs and traffic officers. We expect fifty vehicles to be added to the program in the summer of two thousand twenty-four, with more being added in the fall once the manufacturer confirms delivery. Next, I would like to talk about our school crossing guard updates and the program as it relates to that, which the council was very instrumental in assisting us there. In June of two thousand twenty-three, the county contracted with all city management services, ACMs, for a one-year period to cover ninety-four posts in total with Baltimore County. The B.C. stat team conducted a study during FY twenty-four of operational effectiveness of this model and cost. It was determined that Baltimore County Police Department could provide a more cost-effective and efficient model in-house. A contract renewal will not, I repeat, will not be sought. An FY two thousand twenty-five budget includes additional positions to oversee the program as well as twenty-seven new guards. A total of three hundred guards will be deployed in FY two thousand twenty-five and beyond. We have, as a result, we have experienced twelve thousand fewer calls for service for crossing guard details in the first half of two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year. The Baltimore County Police Department only, the Baltimore County Police Department only model provides a savings to the county of approximately one point two million dollars in the FY two thousand twenty-five budget and beyond. Next, I'd like to talk about body worn cameras and the Baltimore body worn camera rollout. As of May two thousand twenty-four, all citizen, all citizen-facing and/or enforcement personnel have been outfitted with body worn cameras. All others will be outfitted by two thousand twenty-five. The annual cost of maintenance for body worn cameras is covered completely by speed camera enforcement grant. Next, I'd like to talk about safe schools, the SRO activities coverage. I'd like to thank the council for your support and approval of the grant dollars from the Baltimore County Public Schools. Covers began in October, two thousand twenty-three. Baltimore County Public Schools obtained a Maryland Center for Safe Schools grant for one point two million to cover overtime costs. Baltimore County Public Schools requested Baltimore County Police Department presence during, due to issues of unrest in the fall of two thousand twenty-three at athletic events. Officers are asked to cover events at twenty-seven middle schools and twenty-four high schools while they perform basic law enforcement duties and preserve peace. Events are covered by two officers unless circumstances, size, or crowd or unexpected crowds dictate otherwise. Annually, we cover more than seventeen hundred events for the Baltimore County Public School system. Next, I would like to talk about the aviation, unmanned aerial system successes. First, I'd like to talk about the new helicopter that we purchased during our FY two thousand twenty-four. On April the twenty-third, during the event that we saw, we saw our use of our Bambi bucket, we were actually doing training with the new helicopter and training with the Bambi bucket, which is a firefighting mechanism for the helicopter. And officers were able to assist the Baltimore County Fire Department with dispelling a large brush fire at the Lock Raven watershed. A joint effort to create an operational plan with Baltimore County Fire Department for the future incidents is underway. It was just ironic that we had received our new helicopter, and we were actually, we had the trainer and our people actually actively training with the Bambi bucket and the helicopter at the time this fire broke out. And it was a great tool. When it comes to unmanned aerial systems, most of you know us drones, the drone program update. Final stages of planning are underway there. Required training is underway for future users of the devices. Funding is included in the FY two thousand twenty-five budget to cover startup costs for the program, including software and further training. The importance of utilizing both the helicopters and the UAS capabilities. Combining helicopters and UAS in policing greatly enhances law enforcement capabilities. Helicopters allow for rapid response coverage of large areas and assisting in search and rescue, among other things. The UAS offers agility and accessibility to areas difficult for helicopters to reach, such as remote terrain. Drones provide detailed, real-time situational awareness without risking human life. A comprehensive aerial network enables law enforcement to respond swiftly, gather intelligence, and enhance safety and security for personnel and residents alike. Next, I would like to talk about a recent, I would call it not only a national event or an international event, that impacted Baltimore County, and that would be the Key Bridge incident. First of all, I would like to first acknowledge the exceptional performance of all our personnel that were involved in that. They did an outstanding job in responding to that. And as we all know, that continues to, it's an ongoing event that continues. But during that event, the Baltimore County Police Department was able to deploy our marine unit, dive team, aviation, and patrol teams. The marine and dive team aided in swift and efficient search and rescue efforts. Marine team continues to provide significant presence in the waterways and by aiding the Coast Guard, they have asked to extend their patrols for foreseeable futures. So we have a continued schedule, which we'll work down with the Coast Guard. In terms of aviation, aviation provided aerial coverage of search and rescue efforts and maintained security around the site. I can tell you, you know, we responded immediately to that. And in those early morning hours of the event, our helicopter and its night vision capabilities actually provided the only real-time feed of that scene that was available at the time. And that helicopter performed admirably throughout the time we were down there until the sun was up and we could actually get people out on the water and get them, you know, physically in the daylight to be able to search safely for the victims of that, the bridge incident. Patrol wise, patrol aided in the traffic control and oversight of the incident from collision, from the collision to the president's visit and beyond. Looking forward, budgetary and operational impacts, the Baltimore County Police Department has been keeping detailed records of costs in order to seek reimbursement from federal and state partners. None of this would have been possible without the support of the county administration, the county council, and our Baltimore County Police Department team members. As it relates to the future, as you know, this year, we're celebrating our one hundred and fiftieth anniversary with the Baltimore County Police Department's existence. We have numerous incidents planned throughout this year. We have things like our five K race, which is going to occur on May the eleventh, the public safety building anniversary gala that's going to occur on October the thirteenth at Martin's Valley mansion. The county has a rich and proud history when it comes to service and when it comes to service and public safety to its residents. It is because of this council's support of its police department that we are poised and prepared to take on the challenges and opportunities of the future. These challenges and opportunities include investment in our employees, career development, training, health and wellness, workplace efficiencies, and investigating emerging technologies such as AI and cyber intelligence that will likely change the landscape of policing in the future. It's because of your support that we're able to move forward and be an effective, cutting-edge agency. As many of you know, we're one of the twenty largest police departments in this nation. But I would tell you that this agency is one of the top ten or top five agencies when it comes to effectiveness, efficiency, and its relationship with its community. But that only happens because we have a supportive council and we have a supportive community. And I can tell you to a person sitting at this table, we're all proud to serve this agency, Ms. Cullen. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chief McCullough. Now, I'd like to open it up to questions and comments from my colleagues.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Councilman Cash.
Yeah, in the report, there were a number of questions that were included in the report. Chief McCullough, will you individually address these questions?
I can if you have specific questions about something. I hope that I've answered many of them in my statement.
Yeah, I, well, let me get to them right now. The, well, I guess, Ms., what, Bauer Weeks, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, will you go over the questions? I just turned the report on looking for the questions. They're interspersed throughout the report. And I know that some of them are answered, but I think, you know, maybe, I think that we'd be neat. Well, I think that more specific answers to some of these would be very helpful.
Yes, starting with page nine, Councilman Cash.
Okay, page nine.
Yeah.
Okay, Chief. Let's see. Yeah.
After every section, it's a question.
Yeah, the department should be prepared to discuss the proposed funding for its personnel expenses, including the impact of the salary enhancements and other benefits on its ability to attract and retain staff.
Good afternoon, members of the council. Joe Congress, sitting over here across from the chief. You know, obviously, we've included several things that are itemized in the report, you know, as incentives for hiring and for retention. We really appreciate the council's consideration of these. Several of them are carryover programs that have already been implemented, such as the, sorry, the hiring bonuses and then some of the other pay incentives that have been included. And they do make a huge difference. I know we have, May Pivrowski is here, who oversees the Human Services Division. And, you know, we've started to make the turn, and I'll probably refer to that, or will probably refer to that a few times during our hearing today. We know that we have shortages and we're working hard to fulfill them, but they don't happen overnight. Takes a lot of time and effort to identify the right candidates, to onboard them, to train them, and to get them out on the road, making a difference as a police officer. So we have seen an improvement in our application rate. Our applications are up thirty, thirty-one percent, thirty-one percent. And so we expect to see that translate into hires. But, you know, as I mentioned, it doesn't happen overnight. So it'll take us a little bit of time to turn our increase in application rate into an increase in the hire rate. And I would add, in terms of our salary and benefits, it's critical that a county the size of ours and has the population that we have and the diversity of the county itself, that we remain competitive with our surrounding jurisdictions to be able to attract and have the best possible candidates for the Baltimore County Police Department.
Can you tell me what, how our salaries and benefits compare to our immediate neighbors?
I would say because of recent efforts and support of the administration and this current county council, our salaries and benefits are top in the area.
Good.
They're among the best. And it's our hope to keep that away so that we can attract our candidates. I have weekly meetings with our in-service classes, and that's probably the most common topic that we talk about. And I'm proud to say that I can walk into that room and challenge them and tell them, you know, tell me or tell me an agency in this state that has better benefits, better opportunities, better pay, better anything than our agency. And no one can tell me that there is.
Okay, I see some of my colleagues have their hands up. Do any of you have a specific question related to that? Okay, Councilman Cash, I think the next point was about the reorganization. That's on page eleven.
Yes.
Okay.
I can speak directly to that.
Yes.
When I returned as the chief, I evaluated the department and both of our operational efficiencies. Over the years, the department's executive corps and many parts of the department have been degraded to the point that many things have become inefficient and, quite frankly, were not properly staffed to move forward effectively as an agency so that we could be optimal efficiency to deal with things, not only currently, but to be prepared for the future. And looking at that, there were changes that were made to put like tasks in the same bureaus. We added some major positions in places where we needed because, quite frankly, we had exec corps members, we had majors and captains actually performing the duties of two or three other exec corps members. And, quite frankly, there were some things that were falling through the cracks and we were just basically treading water versus actually being in a position where we could move forward as an agency and advance not only the mission, but also deal with the shortages that we had and some of the things we need to do in terms of dealing with technology issues and those things alike.
Okay, did I hear someone had a question?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Councilman Jones.
No, I guess wanted to speak on the hiring and the recruitment and the fact that members are coming back. And I guess wanted to share something with the chief. I don't think it's that far fetched because there's no doubt about it, salary and benefits are extremely important. This is my experience, having been in the fire service for thirty-two years, similar to public safety organization. There's no question that public, I mean, there's no question that pay and benefits are extremely important, but I don't want you to sell yourself or your team short. I know every person there at the table with you, your leadership team, and I can tell you, as it relates to the rank and file, pay and benefits are good, but sometimes it boils down to, and you know, you measure it in the political world when you ask people, are we hitting in the right direction or wrong direction? When people feel good about the organization, they feel like they're hitting in the right direction, and they feel like the leadership cares about them and values their opinion and will look out for them. And in the case of you, Chief McCullough, one of them, having been here for an extremely long time, it makes a difference in how those members go about their daily duties as well as how they talk about the department in terms of recruiting others and how others as how they talk about the department in terms of recruiting others and how others feel like they want to come back and be a part of a winning team. So I don't want to sell yourselves short. Chief McCullough, it's you and your team is what has caused the tremendous turnaround in the police department. Thank you.
Thank you. We do appreciate that, Councilman. It's, it's, I'll say that I'm grateful for hearing that. I will, I will say to the council that I'm most grateful to my team sitting at this table. They do a phenomenal job. The level of commitment and dedication, I have not worked with, in my career, I have not worked with a better team than I have sitting here with me today.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Ortell, Councilman Young.
From the organization.
Yes, okay, do either of you have questions about the organization or?
I, I have some questions, but Councilman Young, do you want to go first?
That's fine.
Yes, so what I thought I would do is just go down the questions the auditor asked and then just, just jump in where you, if you have questions there.
I understand, it's clear, that's fine.
And, and then we'll, we'll wrap up if anyone has any other questions. Okay, very good, um, okay.
Mr.
Yes, Councilman Cash.
Yeah, I, I, I think this is the right spot to do this. Where, are, what is the status of bonuses for recruits, et cetera? Have, didn't, I, I remember reading yesterday somewhere that there are savings from the programs not being eliminated, is it, or what?
Councilman Cash, we, we're definitely not eliminating the program. While we've seen some successes with that, I think what, what you see where the reduction is just really an adjustment for what we have actually realized. And our projections in the previous periods were a little high, they were, they were optimistic. And so as we, as we refine that, you know, it was new, right? The bonus was new at some point. It was a little difficult to make projections on new items, things that we didn't have history with. But now that we've been in several cycles with the bonuses, we're kind of able to refine what we expect, where our projections are in that area. And so that's, that's the adjustment that you see made there.
With reorganization on pages five and six of the report, there's a number of positions that are vacant, were vacant, are vacant, or whatever. And as part of reorganization, how has that reorganization, in essence, attacked this problem of vacancies with staffing? Or how, how the jobs that these people did, or how were they fulfilled?
I would say, first of all, when, the biggest portion of that concerned our forensic section.
Yes.
I spoke to him in my statement, the, when we first get, when I first got back, that we, we found that we weren't competitive at all with surrounding jurisdictions when it came to our, our crime lab and forensic staff. With the help of the administration and the council, we were able to, to reclass and, and comp those positions that resulted in the salaries in all of those positions being increased so that we could actually be competitive around the jurisdictions. And as a result, now, posting those positions, we have, last time I checked, I spoke to our forensic director about simply the crime lab position alone, we had over two hundred applicants for crime lab tech now. And it's been a long time since we had that many applicant, applicants for that position alone. So the, the upgrading, the improvement in salaries and reclass in those positions, we were able to, to address that issue. No, I, I would repeat some of what the chief said, other than if you're asking specifically about the alignment between the reorganization and the vacancies, it's, it is, we do have a better opportunity to focus on what we need to do there. So the chief mentioned we had commanders that were wearing two and three hats, you know, carrying a workload, and everybody has a limited amount of focus. Everything in the world is finite. So our, the, by reorganizing things, be able to look and see where some of those cracks were, and, and then to be able to apply the things like the chief mentioned from forensics to those, we're able to start filling in those holes. That's why we have, although we have these vacancies, we have so many people in the selection process currently. And, and I can tell you that, that it has enabled us as a department in this county to, to attract some of the best talent internally in this county. I have sitting at the table, Mr. Taylor Hawkins Smith, and we also have our, our director of our police personnel section, Mr. Tom Flatt. So we've been able to attract young, talented people that will be here long after many of us are gone, that will take this for, this agency forward.
Thank you. Why don't we move along, just in the interest of time? Page seventeen, there was a question from the auditors on the, the speed camera program.
Says that we should be prepared to discuss. So, so, so in this particular area, this actually is about the, I guess we have a little bit of completion in some discussions between the school bus.
School bus camera, yeah, sorry.
Cameras.
Yeah.
No problem, sir. Trust me, I do it all the time.
Yeah.
The, in this particular case, the school bus program, the stop camera, stop arm camera program, is something that we had looked to have in FY twenty-four, but that, that did not move forward. BCPS did not move forward, the board did not approve it. So we have, obviously, there's been some leadership changes there and some changing and updating of that program, and we are working with BCPS to implement that going forward. I believe we have a meeting, or the, they're supposed to take a vote on it at a meeting in June, and that would put us in a position to implement with the, the next school year, which falls within the fiscal year that we are discussing FY twenty-five. So that, that is why you don't see previous year data in the program as it was originally proposed.
Okay, thank you very much. And then I think the final auditor's questions had to do with ARPA funding. That's on page eighteen.
Yes. Yes, sir. The, we're, we're very proud to say that we had already incorporated the, the long-term costs from ARPA-related projects into the operating budget and, and special fund budgets, as you see here. There are, there are a couple last remaining items that have been listed this year, very small in comparison to what we made with the original ARPA investments, but they are all accounted for, so there's, there are no fiscal flips involved in any of those projects. They're sustainable within the proposed budget.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, pages fourteen and fifteen.
Pages fourteen and fifteen, hold on. What did I skip?
Fourteen and fifteen.
Oh, okay, the vehicles, that's right, okay. Fourteen had to do with, I thought we answered that.
Specifically, Councilman.
Yes.
Focus on page fourteen. We would like an answer to the second bullet there for recruitment. Why the department is only budgeted for a hundred and forty-six recruits in FY twenty-five? If we could get an answer to that question.
Okay, very good.
Very helpful.
Yep, second bullet on page fourteen.
Thank you.
Absolutely. As we started this, to discuss in the, in some response to the earlier questions, we have started to make the turn in making a difference with our hiring, where we're, in the past, we, we have several vacancies because our hiring process wasn't able to keep up with the attrition. But we've made a lot of adjustments. The leadership adjustments as referred to by Councilman Jones, the investments as referred to by the chief, and we've made the turn, but we're not in the home stretch. So while this does look like a modest improvement because of the, because it's a small net of additions over the expected attrition, it is a positive number as opposed to the negative numbers we've had in the past. The, the numbers that we have here, the hundred, the hundred and forty-six, those are based on combination of our ability to, to attract and onboard talent and our capacity to get them through that training process that we were describing. Major Browski, do you want to talk a little bit about where we are with those processes?
Absolutely. In twenty twenty-three, just like the chief said, we were up thirty-one percent in applications. In addition to that, for the past fourteen months, we've seen an increase every month for the past fourteen months in applications. The increase in applications has led to an increase in hiring. In twenty twenty-three, we were up ten percent when compared to twenty twenty-two, and rolling pace to add another ten percent to that in twenty twenty-four, which would be a twenty percent increase over the past two years. So, so this increase that's, that's in this budget proposal falls in line with our anticipated applicants that we can get through the application process in time to be included in FY twenty-five. The other thing to note is that in preparation for the increased hiring demands, the department streamlined its hiring process. We were able to knock off or shorten the, the hiring process by three months in anticipation of needing to hire more people in a more timely fashion. Additionally, in, in addition to that, the department has also added personnel to its background investigation unit to increase, you know, to further increase that efficiency and knowing that we're going to have more applications that are going to lead to more investigations, more background investigations, and then, you know, potentially more hires in the future. And, and we're trying to stay ahead of the curve, you know, to anticipate that we'll have, you know, enough people in place to hire enough people to address the vacancy rate.
So the, so the numbers that we've included are our best reasonable projections. We want to make sure that we're being realistic about what we're going to accomplish. And as I mentioned, we've made the turn, but we're not in the stretch yet. You know, this, this is, is taking us time to dig, to dig out of that hole, and it's going to continue to take some time and effort to do that. And what I would say is much about what we've done over the past year has, has been done primarily for, to be more efficient, but also to be more effective and making sure that we're doing things the right way and making sure that we're looking at our, our systems and how we operate and making sure that we're not operating in silo. I, I would say that now, as an organization, all of our, all of our bureaus are interconnected, interrelated, and there's cross-communication in everything that we do daily.
Okay, thank you. Does that answer your questions, Ms. Bauer Weeks?
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. And then finally, on page fifteen, the take-home car program. On page fifteen.
I did talk about earlier about our timeline in terms of receiving the vehicles. Like I said earlier, we, we, we expect to receive, I think it's, it's over a hundred vehicles in another month or so. I know that, I think I, we spoke the other day, we have about eighty of them over at Global already being outfitted. And when it comes to the, the community presence vehicle program, we expect to deploy about fifty of them to that program. In addition to that, around November, October, November window, we expect another, another hundred and fifty or so more vehicles in at that time. And of course, the correct amount will be actually added to the fleet, but we also are seeking to add an additional number of vehicles to the community presence vehicle program at that time.
Okay, thank you very much, Chief McCullough. My colleagues, Councilman Ortell and Councilman Young have been waiting very patiently. I'll just go in alphabetical order, Councilman Ortell.
Am I good? Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
I'm good. I'm glad I didn't mute myself instead of unmute. I had a couple just quick questions. Do we, for these additional, we, we currently have thirty-six cameras. It says, speed cameras, that is.
Yes, sir.
We said that we added six in FY twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, we had that, I think it's fourteen. It's fourteen.
Well, there's fourteen, it says additional fourteen school zone cameras to be authorized for FY twenty-five.
Right.
I guess my question is, the thirty-six additional, does that mean we have forty-two currently? Or do we have thirty, was it thirty and then we added?
It will actually take us up to fifty. So we cur, we have thirty-six cameras, we have currently thirty-six cameras, and those fourteen additional will take us up to fifty total cameras with a hundred and three locations across the county.
Right. Because, I mean, it's, because it says here, there are a total of thirty-six cameras. The department also advised in FY twenty-four, six additional locations were authorized, and that an additional fourteen school zone cameras will be.
Those, those fourteen are actually in the procurement process, sir.
Okay, but, but we have thirty-six cameras.
We have thirty, thirty-six cameras that are existing, and of course, those cameras are rotated throughout the, the existing location.
And do we pay for those cameras, or is that supplied by the vendor?
It's my understanding, the contract actually pays for itself out of the, the way, the way the contract's structured. They're typically structured where the, the vendor receives a certain percentage from the revenue, and then the rest of the revenue comes to the jurisdiction.
Okay, and there's also a line in here that says two-point-five million for speed camera vendor billing. What is, what is that?
That's, that's probably the money that actually comes out of, the speed camera money that it goes paid for the program.
Okay, so, so we get the full dollar amount, but then we have to pay the vendor for.
Yes, yes.
All right. And then I had a question about the helicopter. We have three helicopters, correct?
Yes, sir.
Do we, how many pilots do we have total?
We have nine total pilots.
Okay, and do we, do we ever put up three helicopters at the same time?
No, sir. I, I can tell you from spending ten years in aviation in the army and you, you know, when you have rotor wings like that, you don't want to fly all your helicopters at one time because, you know, they, we manage them by flight hours. And they also have a maintenance schedule. So what we do is we, we typically fly two, keeping one in reserve, and as they want, as they wrote out, rotate out for service, that keeps us with two more in case one goes down at all times. We, we always want to be operational and have our air set, air assets available to us.
Okay, all right, great. And then, did, did you say we've bought drones?
Yes, sir, we have, we have a drone program, we've bought drones. We're currently in the process of develop, developing our policies and our procedures, and we hope to be actually fielding those drones really soon. They're primarily used in, like tactical operations and search, search and rescue type of operations. And as I said in my statement earlier, they, they're used to access areas typically that helicopters can't go to.
Okay. But we haven't, and, and how many of those do we have?
Three.
Three?
Three, three, three. Well, there's, there's three drones. I think we have two smaller ones, and there's one that's slightly bigger than the other.
And officers are going to be trained to use them, or are we using?
Yes, yes, we have, we, we have personnel dedicated to be drone pilots. They go through a, a training program.
Okay.
And, and also, what I did leave out, and the colonel shared with me also, is that they will also, those drones also use the map crash scenes also.
Okay. Is there, what, what is the vulnerable population outreach program?
You, can you, can you say that again, sir?
The vulnerable population outreach program.
Yes, sir. Vulnerable population outreach, we, we recognize that there are multiple populations that could be considered more vulnerable than, than what we'd say is typical. In this particular program, we wanted to augment the tools that were available to, to.
In this particular program, we wanted to augment the tools that were available to two of our programs, one being domestic violence outreach and the other being elder abuse outreach liaisons. In both of those programs, we've dedicated personnel and assignments to be able to assist those vulnerable populations. But we've had, you know, limited opportunities to give them the tools they need, whether it's the vehicles so they can go out and engage people as opposed to relying on them to meet them at the station or the computers, communications equipment, and those types of things. So that project was designed to give those positions the better tools to accomplish their missions.
One other question, traffic guard or the crossing guard. So we're dropping the, we're dropping the contract that Council Chair Jones was so against, remember? Have we, it says that we're going to save one point two million, but we had budgeted two point one. Is that what we spent this year in with them, one point two?
The, the one point two is the projected savings because it's not a one hundred percent savings. They were staffing ninety-four sites and providing the administrative support, the supervision, the training, the backfill, et cetera. So we do incur some costs for taking over the ninety-four sites back in-house and for building out a better system for managing it. Better system being zone supervisors who can be a closer presence to overseeing and supporting the guards that are on post, as well as being able to backfill and avoid taking police officers away from other duties to fulfill those duties. So that is a net savings.
And was that, was that contract originally asked for by the police department, or was that from the administration?
We worked with the administration to seek that contract in the last year. We did, the police department did support it. I spent a lot of time talking with Councilman Jones on the stand. But we really appreciate that the council supported it. I would say that that contract did two things for us. Number one is it immediately closed the gaps that we had for this school year. I mean, the vendor has provided covers for ninety-four sites, which allowed us to focus on the remainder of the sites, building our process, et cetera. And the other thing is that we learned some things that we can apply going forward to how to improve our system. Things that we learned from seeing how the vendor operates, things that we learned from just being able to take a little bit of the pressure off of the coverage and being able to focus a little bit more on our processes. So that one year of service was a Band-Aid for that year, and it also has put us in a really good position to perform better in the future with an in-house program.
And I would like to remind you a comment that I made earlier, you know, also as a result of that, we reduced our calls for service by twelve thousand calls for service for crossing guard details. That meant, that meant that we didn't have to send officers or cadets out to those locations to man those traffic, you know, those crossing guard details.
Right, okay. Well, thank you for everything you guys do, and we, you know, we always appreciate you being out there.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Councilman Young, you've been very patient. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I just wanted to point out, Chief McCullough, thanks for your personal participation and presence with the work group on resource coordination, supporting victims of sexual exploitation, violence, and domestic abuse. Absolutely, you being there and your willingness from your department folks to support that has been one encouraging, one to me, the other members, and to the folks who are trying to serve through the community. So I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
On page ten, it references a decrease of three hundred and one dollars related to professional services, primarily due to mental health screening costs. It also then goes on to mention that it's because of the change in timeline. It's one of the, one, two parts. Just ask a little clarification on that, and as you normally ask, and I did ask the Department of, our Department of Health, if there was co-collaboration or collaboration with your department related to mental health services for our officers, just give you a chance to talk about what we are offering to folks that are in the line of duty and have experienced trauma and could utilize and benefit from services.
So as you know, we were mandated by law to start doing mental health assessments for our officers. And of course, we were actively doing that. That timeline was adjusted. I think a lot of that savings was as a result of our timeline being adjusted in terms of implementing the program. So that's where that savings comes from.
I appreciate it. And I know that you and I have talked in the past, and you have been informed too. Just what are we, what other programs are we offering internally? And are we thinking outside the box or partnering with, you know, other organizations within the county to provide those types of services to our officers?
So, you know, as you know, our organization uses the mental health app Cortico. So we're utilizing that app internally. All the members are offered the opportunity to download that app and to utilize the resources there. Of course, we have a peer-to-peer counseling program in the agency. We, you know, we encourage our employees to come forward. And we try, I think most importantly, I would say over the past, it's been the past several years, but especially over the past year, there's been a real focus on creating an environment, a culture in the organization where it's, where people feel it's okay to come forward and to discuss their problems and to seek help. And there's no stigma added to that. I was, as recently as the day before yesterday, up at Harbor Grace, up in Havity Grace, where we send many of our officers for alcohol and substance abuse. But we are also utilizing them also as a service for mental health issues. So members are also using their private insurance to seek mental health assistance outside of the organization privately also. And of course, we support that, and we work as partners with them. And that was the reason why I was up there to, just to meet and to have some good conversation and to assure them of our support as an organization, of that organization, and to let them know that we appreciate what they're doing for not only our members of our law enforcement agency, but members of law enforcement across the nation and members of the fire department.
I appreciate the context information. Wanted to, through just interacting with me and interacting with you, you know that I appreciate context. So the next couple of questions can be related to use of force. And I think the first question actually might be for Director Reed, if you wouldn't mind firstly being, when the county has to pay out a settlement related to a use of force incident, is where are we budgeting that? And that's not coming from the police department's budget, right? That's, or counted against or included in that, right? That's somewhere else.
Councilman, correct. That is through our self-insurance fund, our liability claims fund.
Excellent. Good to know. So the question related to use of force, and I want to be clear too, you know me, I like to get details so we can try and identify something that might be able to solve something maybe. On BC Stat, it references between January first and September thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, there are seven hundred and five incidences of use of force. I am not saying that there were seven hundred and five negative interactions, but just statistically interacting with the police department, there were seven hundred and five incidents of use of force, use of force. Out of these incidences, the vast majority of them happened with officers that were in their first year, second year, third year, and then started to taper off in their fifth year. So the question related to what are we doing related to training, not just with our cadets, but what are we doing for ongoing training, knowing that from those incidences, the vast majority of them are happening, and sometimes justifiably so, with our newer officers or folks that haven't had as much training? What are we doing to continue training among officers that are in the field and that are consistently going to be in those situations more often?
So what I will tell you is that we continue to do our ICAT training, our de-escalation training. We continue to talk across the organization, across our training division, everything from our comstat to our, my weekly meetings with our internal affairs section and reviewing our use of forces, to even, you know, once again, I talk about, you know, changing the culture over the past year and talking, you know, the message of making sure that our people are going out there and treating people with dignity and respect. You know, when you consider the number of calls for service that we respond to in a year and the types of calls, you know, honestly, seven hundred and five uses of force are not that many. And sometimes you also have to, you know, understand that sometimes there's multiple uses of forces at one incident because you have multiple officers there. It's how we also document those incidents. So we, right now, we even have, I have a project with our internal affairs section where we're actually doing a deep dive. And we have an early warning system, but we're internally, I just recently met with all the colonels who are sitting at the table, and we had extensive discussions about looking at our use of forces, looking, looking at our complaints, whether they're coming from internal or external. So we're doing an even deeper dive into our incidents, and we're taking a look at how things are occurring, how these things are coming about, and we're looking constantly for strategies that we can implement to try to prevent these things from happening before they happen. But once again, also, as I spoke before the council when I first became chief, I promised you guys that I would address, we had a lot of internal, open, internal various complaints. We also had quite a few open trial boards, and we've since addressed all those issues, and we continue to address those issues. But we continue to look at our internal affairs process, and even through our capital, our capital projects, we're actually relocating our internal affairs section to a new location to increase the accessibility for the public. We continue to be transparent, and we look to even be more transparent in terms of making sure that all our data is being posted publicly on the website and that we're cooperatively working with our various partners and citizen groups across the community like the NWA CP, in which we meet with them regularly to discuss any issues of concern for people in the community.
Absolutely. And two points to that, absolutely with transparency. I just wanted to thank you for that. You've invited me, and I've participated in your weekly crime stat meetings up at the Public Safety Building. Eye-opening for me, and also to see how coordination between departments solves crimes across the entire county. Appreciate your openness to that, to allow me to participate. And the other thing, which you mentioned about change of culture, I absolutely believe that the turnaround in terms of our recruitment and our applications is due to the changes that you've made and you being in your position. It's admirable, and also yeoman's work that you're doing. And I think you know too, that reputation of a department has a lot to do with that as well, which you are turning around. It's why it's so important to make sure that you know, and I'm saying things that you and your team already know, when we're talking about those use of force incidences where we at Baltimore County have not had to have the same narratives and that nationally other departments have had. That's partly due to the professionalism of our officers and the training that they get. And I, one, just glad to hear that that continuing work with the department and services that you're already providing to officers that are in the field are continuing so that we don't and have less opportunities for negative narratives to be presented about our officers when we know statistically they're doing the right thing and being trained correctly to, to address those situations when they arise. I appreciate you for all the time and your continued collaboration. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman Young. Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be brief. First, on the drones, chief. I remember sending you a video of a successful use of a drone by Howard County Police Department. And if you recall, and I don't know, but I guess think maybe we can do more than three. My only advice would be, let's not make the rock too heavy. The use that I saw was when a suspect took off on foot, the officer was able to launch the drone. He was able to identify the officer and then send other officers directly to his location. And that, to me, from what I saw, he may have a speech-seeking camera onboard, I'm not sure. But what I saw was probably the use of what amounts to probably some off-the-shelf technology that, you know, more of them are better than two super-duper ones. So only advice there would be, don't make the rock too heavy. More is better than sophistication. After all, we do have the helicopters for a big incident. And the other thing is, I was just going to congratulate you as it relates to your leadership in the department for leadership right now, especially as it relates to review of the use of force. I know earlier, I guess it was late last year, there was an unfortunate incident. Obviously, from time to time, despite all our best efforts, we're going to have police officers that may do something we're not proud of. But that was a case where no one filed a complaint. The department reviewed the use of force and took the appropriate action. And even though it, you know, it bore the little, you know, negative press on the department, you handled it well and you did the right thing. And I think all of that leads to a more professional organization and letting employees know what is expected of them and the fact that they will be held accountable. It doesn't take their, a complaint from someone else, that they will be, you know, what happens inside the department will be reviewed. So, thanks a lot.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Councilman. Chairman Patoka did want me to read a question. I'm just going to quote it verbatim. Can you ask the police how much they plan to spend in fiscal year twenty-five to bail out corrections and fire in the form of bats?
Oh.
His words, verbatim.
I would say, I would say as the chief of this organization, it's my goal to run this organization as efficient, efficiently, and effective as possible. While there may be funding that may be left over at the end of the year, that of course, I can always find a way to support my own department. The money belongs to the taxpayers of Baltimore County. And if the administration sees fit that, that we have to utilize the money to balance the budget to deal with other operations, we're committed as a team player in this county to making sure that we have a balanced budget for our county. That's what it's all about.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments for my colleagues? Okay, hearing none. Thank you very much, Chief McCullough and your colleagues. It's a pleasure to continue to work with you, and we'll see you soon.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you to the entire county.
Thank you. Now we will turn our attention to insurance. With our Director of Budget and Finance, Kevin Reed, our Insurance Administrator, Becky Ellis, Budget Office Analyst is Jennifer Barons, and our Legislative Analyst is Marie Jung. Marie, do you want to start things off?
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, Chairman and members of the council. The proposed fiscal year 2025 general fund budget for the insurance contributions program totals one hundred ninety-six point eight million dollars, an increase of seven million dollars, or three point seven percent over the fiscal year 2024 appropriation. The increase is primarily attributable to additional funding for active employee health insurance, including four million dollars to cover the cost of ending in calendar year 2025 the bifurcated rate structure that has been in place since 2007. The county's contribution for OPEB, which is Other Post-Employment Benefits for County Retirees, is decreasing by four point three million dollars due to the additional fifteen million dollars above the funding level recommended by the consultant that was contributed in fiscal year 2024. In fiscal year 2025, the county's OPEB contribution again exceeds the funding level recommended by the consultant, this time by six point two million dollars, which qualifies as an exclusion from the Spending Affordability Committee's compliance calculation. On page three, you will see the budget history of the program and the composition of the proposed budget. Here you can see that the county's employer contributions for OPEB in Burgundy have been increasing in recent years, while employer contributions for active employee health insurance, shown in blue, have been steady. Contributions for liability insurance in green are somewhat higher. On page four, the analysis provides the fiscal year 2025 budget highlights. On page four, the analysis provides the fiscal year 2025 budget highlights. And beginning on page six are the topics related to these budget highlights, including OPEB funding, the county's contribution for general government active employee health insurance, and general government funding for liability claims. On pages four and five, under budget flexibility, the analysis provides information on the discretionary costs associated with the proposed elimination of the bifurcated health insurance rate structure. And it points to an area of flexibility in the proposed fiscal year 2025 budget that totals $31.5 million and consists of excess funds in the health insurance reserve. A potential budget reduction would keep intact the full recommended incurred but not reported reserve as well as at least $7.9 million of projected excess reserve as of June 30th, 2025. And at this time, I will turn things over to you for discussion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? For Ms. Jen? Okay, I don't see any. Uh, thank you very much. And now we'll turn our attention to Mr. Reed.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and, uh, council members. Uh, I have a few partners on the call today I would like to introduce if that's all right.
Sure.
We have, um, Becky Ellis, our Health Insurance Administrator. We have Kristen Evans, our Wellness Coordinator. We have our longtime healthcare consultant, Mark Lynn with Bolton Partners. We have Greg Dorn from Property Management. Jen Barons is our Insurance Analyst in OBF. And County Attorney James Benjamin is on the panel as well and can speak to, uh, any liability questions that come up. I wanted to thank you all for the opportunity to discuss the insurance budget. This is a budget that funds all of our insurance, self-insurance program, which includes property insurance, liability and workers' comp funding. And of course, our health programs. We have two internal, internal service funds, one for our active claims and one for our liability program for workers' comp and liability in general auto. And we also manage the OPEB trust, uh, that is set up and managed like our pension system. And it looks like the auditors have four main topics, which I'm, um, happy to walk through. But before we do, I would like to address the budget flexibility section that we have on page five and, and page six. And the, the auditor's analysis would make it seem that we have a surplus in our health insurance fund of 31.5 million. Um, if we look at that closely, uh, you know, that, that is a projection at the end of next fiscal year. Um, respectfully, I don't think that's really prudent to assume that we'll have those type of savings in the future. This fund will naturally draw a surplus, whereas our OPEB fund will naturally draw a deficit. And this is because of the way we charge for healthcare. We have basically three groups that receive healthcare benefits. We have our active employees that are charged to this fund, the health insurance fund. We have pre, pre Medicare retirees that are charged to the OPEB trust that pay active rates, more or less, and our post Medicare retirees that are charged to the OPEB trust. So overall, and, and the analysis provided to the auditors, we, we will break even and do break even every year between the two funds. Um, so in, over the course of a calendar year, the total amount of rates multiplied by the enrollment is projected to equal the expenditures, which is our claims plus our fixed cost. So if rates are set accurately and, and past practice has shown that, that Bolton does a very good job, um, then the O38 fund will experience a surplus like this. And conversely, the O38 fund, the, um, our OPEB trust would, would show a slight deficit. Um, active employees and pre Medicare, again, they pay the same premiums and use the same insurance plans. And that's a benefit that we really have for our pre Medicare retirees. And this surplus would be the result of those, distribution of those costs. So, um, you know, we, we're, we're cautiously looking at this. The council in the past has, um, you know, recommended and we have done transfers that the auditors, uh, recognize from the active plan to the OPEB trust, and that would be a prudent use. Um, but again, you know, that 31.5 figure, I wouldn't really focus on. I mean, the number that, that, that would be, if anything, would be closer to the 2024 estimate, which is 14 million. Um, and we're projecting to be slightly lower. So I just wanted to, to point out that before I get into the topics for discussion. On page nine, we have the, um, OPEB funding and a rehired retiree healthcare. It says we should be prepared to discuss whether an actuarial impact analysis was, uh, associated with this, the single tiered rate structure. And, um, as the auditor's mentioned, and, and we are excited about this from a hiring standpoint. In calendar year 2025, with our new plans, we do have a single unified contribution scenario or one rate structure. I guess the technical term is single unified contribution scenario plan, which will do away with the structure of people paying different rates if you were hired pre 2007 and post 2007. Those that are hired after 2007, if you look online in our benefits sheet, we have, um, blue rates and red rates. The red rates are higher for those hired after. Um, they will be one rate going forward, more mirrored, closer to the blue rates. And this was a major ask of our labor groups and after analysis that we had with other jurisdictions, we found out that um, one, we were the only ones that really charged a different amount based on the date of hire and that for those hired after 2007, we were extremely not competitive as far as our benefit packages were concerned. So as a hiring manager, um, I know personally that this was a barrier for attracting folks, especially, um, we've, we've heard it also in our public safety folks. So we do plan to make this additional investment to our workforce of $4 million to have our one rate structure. And to answer the auditor's question, um, relation to studies, we, we did do studies around the migration patterns that would probably result in this change and that our, our health insurance plans for those hired after 2007, so people coming on would be more expensive for the organization and those dropping off would save us funding. Um, but this really isn't an OPEB issue, it's an active employee issue. Um, since our retiree system 67 is the new retirement age for non-public safety, it, it doesn't really affect our OPEB plans. When we talk about OPEB, because I love talking about OPEB, the, we are still fully committed to addressing the cost of retiree benefits in two ways. We're always reviewing our plan options and offerings and relations to costs. And we've been continually ramping up our OPEB contributions as demonstrated again this year. And although this is overall a 2% increase over FY24, um, as the auditor notes, it's a $6.2 million recommendation, um, over the recommendation by our actuaries. You know, and we do thank the Spending Affordability Committee for allowing us this additional funding, um, for this exclusion. So we, we were able to ramp up a lot last year that, that enabled us to soften a little bit this year. The analysis notes a decrease in the estimated pay go levels, um, of what we are projected to pay in FY26 down to 129 million versus 138 million where we are prior, were prior to the implementation of our fully insured retiree first plans, formerly known as labor first. Now that we are fully implemented, the current status of our OPEB trust is estimated to be 13% up from where we, where we would have been at 8% had we not moved to one of these measures. And again, we're going to continue to increase that, that funding status. We do plan at FY26 to, to budget, um, 129 million dollars. That would be our an 8% increase up, but that would meet our goal of contributing as much as we have coming out of the system in FY26. And we're basically almost there. And on another positive note for the future, um, after 26, our increases do tend to stabilize, uh, to get to that 50% funding in FY2050, um, depending on the, the goals of that time. The second part of that question is about our, uh, our comps to other jurisdictions. It, it really, the plans vary widely around the country and even in Maryland, it's really all over the map, um, and, and hard to kind of pin down. We're trying to get 50% funded in 2050. No other counties are really pushing for 100% as everyone prioritizes pensions over OPEB when time gets tight. A lot of plans have closer OPEB plans, um, for, for new members going forward. Uh, we don't plan to do that at this time, but we, um, you know, this is an expensive cost, but we do want to honor the commitment that we've made to our retirees. On our active health section, uh, number two, it talks about our anticipated trends in our employee health insurance costs um, and how we compare with national averages. And I'd like to toss it over to Mark Lynn, our, uh, health consultant from Bolton.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lynn.
Good afternoon.
Thank you, Mr. Lynn.
Good afternoon, everybody. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
So overall, your trends, um, when we talk about trends, we're talking about healthcare costs per person, per year. Those have been, um, more favorable than other jurisdictions. We met a couple of months ago with Cigna who administers your plans. And in their most, and a recent annual report, your long-term trend, and that was FY18 through FY23, was 2.9% annualized. Over that same time period, their public sector database as a whole averaged 4% compounded per year. So, so you're doing a little better than your peers. Um, we think that has been influenced by a couple of things. One is the county's wellness initiatives, uh, also Cigna's programs to manage healthcare costs and the RFP that we did in 2022, which resulted in improved pricing, particularly on prescription drug costs. And when we look at what the rate increases have been over the last couple of years and then projected for calendar 25 and remember your, although your fiscal year is June 30 ending, your renewals in terms of open enrollment and rate setting is calendar year. So for calendar 2023, the weighted average for all of the entities, and when I say entities, I'm including the school system and CCBC, the weighted renewal for 2023 was 1.7%. And that compared to, and we, for a benchmark in terms of overall, um, healthcare costs nationally, we use the Kaiser Family Foundation. They do a report every year of, um, of employers nationally, and they found that for 2023, the average increase was just under 7%. And as I said, your, your, um, entities combined was 1.7. For calendar 24, the overall renewal was 3.9%. And it's estimated for calendar 25 to be 5.9. So it has ticked up a little bit, but we've seen that generally for a lot of our clients. Um, healthcare areas are generally assuming 7% for healthcare inflation. Uh, we've continued to use 5% in our projections. We've used that for a number of years. And that has, that has worked out and we've continued to use that for the projection for 2025. Um, that's what I wanted to go through. Are there, are there questions?
Yes, uh, Mr. Lynn? Would you be able to address what the long-term OPEB cost effects associated with the policy change to eliminate the bifurcated, uh, structure might be? It's related to the question on page, on page nine.
The question on page, on page nine.
Yeah, the bifurcated structure really was, um, was an impact to the active employee costs. Um, the, there was a, a small impact to OPEB for, for doing a similar thing for the pre Medicare retirees. But the, the, the major impact was for active employees who, who are going to a one contribution structure.
And if any of my colleagues have questions, just raise your hand. I mean, we can kind of ju- jump into this. Okay, uh, go ahead and continue, please.
If, uh, Mark, does that wrap up your section and I can move on to the liability claims if that's right, Mr. Chair?
Absolutely.
Okay, um.
Absolutely.
Okay. I have, uh, the, as far as our liability claims, I can address the first section and then I'll, I'll, um, hand it over to County Attorney Benjamin, who, who manages the, uh, workers' comp liability. But when we talk about the funding and, and risk margins, um, you know, we saw very, a lot of, um, higher claims in FY2022, um, that, that kind of peaked and that was really, um, and Mr. Benjamin can speak better, clearing out of, of all law, um, law, lawsuits. Um, our claims have now dropped to about 8.6 million in FY23 and we're on pace for a similar amount in FY24. You know, in, in response to the increase that we saw over the couple of years that we, we had funded a little more at the 75% risk margin last year, uh, as recommended by our actuary. It was, I think we had 3 million over to get us closer to that 75%. Um, and what that basically says is all things being equal in 75% of cases, um, the, the, the funding that we have would cover the claims. In, in light of the, the better claims experience that we're seeing our actuary and, and, uh, contribution with our office and the Office of Law feel that the $9.7 million appropriation for FY25 is prudent and is funded at what they call the actuarial central, which is more middle of the road. So we, we're, we've seen a decrease in claims and we've been able to kind of soften some of that. And, um, I'll, I'll turn it over to, uh, County Attorney Benjamin to talk about future efforts to, to minimize claims.
Thank you, uh, Kevin. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, uh, members of the, uh, uh, council. Um, the claims management unit is, uh, under the Office of Law, as you know. And it reviews claims that come in. Uh, if there's a claim that looks like something that could have been prevented or if there's an analysis of risk that shows a constant or consistent problem or threat to bodily harm or injury, uh, the unit will work with agencies, uh, to put protocols in place with departments, uh, to prevent or limit further, uh, claims of similar, uh, uh, nature. Uh, if the unit, uh, sees a trend in how automobile accidents, for example, are occurring, unit will do an analysis and work with agency on further, uh, risk management. So the idea really is to identify and assess areas of risk and then implement strategies uh, to minimize impact and to limit the, uh, claims where all possible.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Benjamin. Um, is that, is that the, that's the presentation, correct?
I, I do have, um, one more section the auditors had that we're, we're pretty excited about, Mr. Chair.
Sure, absolutely.
This is our, one of our big wellness initiatives that, that is coming up this year. It's our flagship. We're really excited about this. Um, it's the opening up of an onsite employee healthcare clinic coming at 305, uh, at Washington Avenue this fall. If you remember when the council approved our new health insurance contracts, uh, that were effective last year, part of what was included in that package was an onsite health clinic. And, you know, obviously we've been struggling with space in the Towson Core, um, and with, with the purchase of 305 Washington provides a perfect location with minimal buildout, um, for the first, on the first bottom left floor. Um, the, the auditors asked a question about costs that, that to build this out, we're, we're looking at approximately $229,000 with Cigna actually covering the majority of the buildout except for FFNE. So, um, we're really excited about that. I think, uh, it'd be best, Mr. Chair, if I turn it over to Becky Ellis to talk more about what will be offered at that site for our employees.
Yeah, absolutely. Ms. Ellis?
Yeah. Um, good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the council. Um, yes, we're very excited. This is, um, our employee health clinic. Will have two exam rooms, waiting room, triage area, um, offices and a lab. It, it is a full-fledged physician's office and, um, it, it will have, it will be staffed with a full-time nurse practitioner, a medical assistant and a registered, um, nurse who will be an educator and a coach. Um, the nurse practitioner and medical assistant will focus on, um, they will be an extension of the employee's care team, um, for sick care and for preventive care. And if an employee is without a general practitioner, as we know, there's kind of a, um, well, there is not kind of, there's a shortage of, um, primary care physicians right now. So if they're without one or they have to wait too long to get in with them, this will give them another resource, um, to get that care and, um, and provide the convenience of, um, it being here in, um, Towson. And the, um, the RN nurse educator, their focus will be coaching, um, primarily weight loss, diabetes and, um, and promoting, helping us promote our programs like OMADA, which is for prediabetics. And we relaunched, um, that program. We've had that for a number of years, but we recently, um, relaunched an employee communication to try and remind, um, remind folks that that's there and then for our newer employees that may not know it's there, um, so that they can take advantage of that. Um, we were also asked, um, about our, um, EAP services, employee wellness and, um, GLP-1s. I'll start with wellness. I, I mentioned OMADA. Um, we have an array of wellness activities all throughout the year. Um, I wanted to, um, drill down to the public safety specific programs, um, and this came up earlier. So I wanted to add to that. Um, police, um, they have a dedicated EAP provider as part of our Cigna. Police, they have a dedicated EAP provider as part of our Cigna contract. And 20, onsite, 24 hours a week. But the bigger initiative for them has been O2X human performance for fire and police. And O2X is a program founded by former Navy SEALs who are dedicated to serving others. And it targets the specific issues facing tactical populations. So and fire, I think they engaged first and now police has engaged with O2X. And the feedback we've received is great and they are enjoying the expertise of the O2X staff and have a dedicated staff member. This team is comprised of comprised, excuse me, of athletes and former former special operations from the military and Olympic athletes and professional athletes. So it's, it's got a robust team behind it and we're very excited to have that. As for the GLP-1s, they're a topic everywhere. I hear commercials all the time. We have been evaluating GLP-1 coverage for weight loss and will continue to evaluate the effectiveness and potential impact to the plan long-term. And similar to the state of Maryland, we do cover them for our diabetic members if they meet the prior authorization criteria. You have to have a certain A1C and there's other precursors. And as you probably know, these drugs are very costly in the United States. So we're, that's why we're proceeding and researching with caution. So, but very much on our radar and very important as weight loss is obesity is, we have we have over 9,000 members who are diabetic, not diabetic yet, excuse me. They're obese or they're obese and they have hypertension. So they're just a hair away from becoming diabetic. And so we're trying to work with them and the clinic will help with that to try and prevent them from getting in that category because it is a huge cost for the county. And that's it. Any questions?
I don't see any. Thank you very much. Oh, actually, Councilman Ortel, yes.
Yes. You're muted.
You're muted, Councilman Ortel.
All right. Ms. Ellis, thank you. It's pretty exciting that we're going to have this clinic available. Is this for all employees?
It is for all employees. It is for all employees, whether they're, well, yeah, it would be for all employees.
Okay. And are we, are we focused more on the preventive side of things, it sounds like, hopefully, or no?
It'll be both. It will be both. And yes, programs that we're pushing out, I mean, the clinic will be kicked off with a biometric screening to introduce people. And so there'll be free biometrics and they'll be hosted, you know, hosted by the clinic probably over a number of days, kind of like an open house. And but it'll also be for sick care so that people can get to work and not stay home because they have an appointment later in the day. So it will be both.
And you said, you said we have 9,000 members who are obese and pre-diabetic, 9,000 of our Baltimore counties?
It's over, it's, it's all of us. That number was all of us, all entities, the college and the schools as well.
Wow, a lot.
And Becky, that includes dependents.
Pretty easy.
Independent, independent, right, okay. Yeah, we, I'm an insurance broker by trade and we had a client of ours, a larger client who did biometric screenings a bunch of years ago. And it, there were some people, you know, thinking with things other, that kind of thing. But a lot of the employees participated and we found a lot of things that we were able to give people treatment for or onto meds to take care of, you know, super high cholesterol levels, blood sugar levels that were really high. And, you know, a lot of people tend to be ticking time bombs, so this hopefully will help us.
Yes, agreed. And we have had, it won't be our first biometric screening. We've had them routinely. I don't think we've had one since COVID, but yeah, we'll have one in the fall at the clinic.
All right. Well, thank you. That's exciting news.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Ortel. Any other questions? I did have one additional question for Mr. Reed. The changes to the health insurance, will that come before the council at all?
In reference to?
The new rate structure.
I believe it's coming to the council with this budget.
With this budget?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Okay. Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, could I ask one?
Sure.
I just, I don't know that it's quick. Hopefully it is. This is for Director Reed. The OPEB, I guess it's a chart, it's a chart on page seven.
Yes, sir.
It looks like, you know, so we only went up about what is that, 2, 2 million this year?
Yes.
And the next year, we're going up 8 million and then the following year, we have to go to 135. And they ramp up pretty quickly after that. I, I mean, where seems like we might have more of an issue here is hovering these costs in 24 years or am I smoking something?
No, sir. I mean, you have a very fair point. It, you know, we this, other post-employment benefits are a major, a major cost factor. And, and, you know, to get where we need to go, which in 2050 is 50% funded, you know, these are some of the numbers, you know, you'll look in 2050 to 2051 how it drops off because that's when we meet our 50% funding target. I'll be here, hopefully. So, you know, then we'll have a big budget decrease that year. It'll be great. But no, I mean, we, and what you see is, you know, from 24 to 25, it is a smaller increase. We needed a little bit of relief to fit within spending affordability. But we did have such a large ramp up last year. I forgot that the final number, I think, was over $30 million to get us, you know, to this point. So, you know, again, we will keep reviewing the benefits offered and, you know, as more people kind of help having retiree first, you know, work with our members to ensure that they're not over insured, our retirees, and kind of look at other ways to hopefully soften these OPEB costs. But, but, but no, that's, that's a fair point. I mean, we're looking at, you know, 5 to 7 million dollar increase each year. So, and again, that's, that's along with our active increases.
And this is, this is strictly retirees on OPEB, correct?
Yes, pre, pre and post Medicare, yes.
Pre and post. And once they get to Medicare, are we are we still giving them full coverage at that point? Are we just a supplement to Medicare? Or do they not, are they not eligible for Medicare?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Becky, but we are, we are offering a supplement to Medicare.
Right. We require them to take Part B. As long as they're eligible. And most are.
So our, our costs here theoretically are full coverage for retirees who are under 65, correct? And then Medicare supplement for all those after 65?
Yes.
And are we paying their Medicare D costs as well?
We're, we're supplementing, we're contributing to the Medicare D.
Okay.
Yeah.
We contribute and they have to buy it themselves?
Yeah, retiree first has it on the menu or it's built into their Advantage Plan.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Ortel. Anyone else? And with that, I think we are finished. Mr. Boswick, the next hearing is Tuesday at 2 o'clock, and that's the Fire Department, correct?
Correct, sir.
Okay, thank you. Thank you to everyone involved with the hearing today and hope you all have a pleasant weekend.
Thank you, Sam.
You too.
Thank you. Bye-bye.